Okay.
Sean, you want to be on here? I'm sure you can come in, maybe leave.
Our storm.
You're too many people.
Maybe not.
Well, that's the whole topic. Play your game. Hey, look, this is sweet. And we have really, really stop.
So we're going to be at one story to hear from this one. And then that one. It's just like this fire.
I think you're.
Do you guys pre-order?
Yeah.
There's a lot of things to shoot part of it. Maybe we need to say tiny wise. That was his first. Yes, please. Okay. That was.
No, what? Yeah, what?
Something. That's all. That's. Yeah. It is.
We don't just get that. I think it's like years.
That was.
One of my serious thing that I feel could happen is down, which you.
Right.
And you're nice.
One.
Off the other side, we'll use the first one. But I think we were very good. And stuff.
Yeah. But.
I don't think there was. I mean, there you have the last. That way. Cause you know, you know.
Yeah, let me see. So that's always been a thing with you. Wow. Be back. That's. I don't think. I'm not trying to kid out.
Again, I can't. This is a big thing for July. While this is July, I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Years.
Yeah.
I don't know. You know, things are going to be.
You know, it's nice that.
But.
Nice to. Is it that?
Is that right?
I don't know.
Well, you know.
She ended up. That was passing two weeks ago. But they just couldn't. That was. Yeah. So. Yeah. It's one day. That means yeah. That's the next time I think about you. So best. Yeah. I have. Or we try.
Yeah, it was ending.
But yeah, but same time I throw you. That's why you. Of the actions isn't not in all houses. Johnny or not, but it was this. No, it's just a city right in this part of the. If you know, the same. So I would say.
Yeah.
If it's lighter than it was. Morning and evening. Well, they're not.
I'm very excited.
I was. All of it.
Okay.
See. Did you go ahead and.
Did you make? That's pretty good.
I'm curious.
I gotta make sure my secret. Very good. I think.
Really, this is like you must want to. I said.
Well, thanks. And I mean, so. We're gonna be. You know, we have questions. Well, that's great. Well, I guess.
He's. He can get through it two weeks. Oh, that's. And we didn't. And it produced.
Well, true.
Hi, Ben.
Thank you.
That's good.
It's uh, yeah. Here's the white paint that I watch him. It's like. Full length. Oh, you know. You're simply. She can't write. And I just like the character to me. The comments there. And the security kind of can do. You can just say grace. Like. Oh, yeah, right. You know. Right. That was.
Yeah.
I didn't think. That's right.
And this word.
You don't have to. That's a mile.
Really, right there.
I know.
Okay. Okay.
Well, how do I? Today. They do. Um, it might be a smaller.
Yeah, it's nice to be.
Later, I mean, I mean, this is. Okay. They have this.
Um, yes.
Sounds good there. Yeah, but. Part of. If I just put it on.
My mind. Not in this.
Well, you got. This is.
Yeah. Let me get any of these pictures. Someone.
I'm sitting there, don't worry. Shouldn't say. Actually, we believe. Yeah, we believe you should always worry.
Oh, that's.
You should.
No, that's a given. That's what I'm saying, right? Really. I was just going to say, well, it's it's on slide. We just gotta be like.
Right. Right. You're. Yeah.
Oh, no, thank you.
We have a problem. That's kind of. We have. And sure. Everybody. Yeah. If you're.
I just. You're up there.
Sir. Still. I'm willing to. Believe that. I was like, oh. I want to shoot.
Yeah, I would. Here's the part.
It's like this whole piece of. Yes.
I believe you know. I'm not sure. I'll point you to the.
What?
I have to say, I heard I was one two. Probably like ten people. Okay.
We go with that. I was. There's. On your. What? And then they.
That's what. I thought it was a virgin.
Because it's had a story. Yeah, yeah.
You.
You're good. That's honestly like. I'm sure. You guys. That's. Think.
That was.
Yeah.
I can do this all. So. I don't want. Why? Here. There's not a lot. I will be going on this morning. Come on. Now, the way she gets. Yeah.
It's like that. Don't. I just wanted to do that from mine.
Same reason. You touch it, it's kind of like. Like it. Yeah, I do. So I have. What's that?
Looking something.
It's true.
Look.
It happens to be a left thing. But I saw.
I know. I didn't see whether we're not. Sorry.
I did only because of what you said.
Thank you.
Well, then you actually answered. You actually. Right. Right. So the jewels. On this place. You are. Nice. She had hers on too.
It's nine thirty, all those it's so changed. Please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All meeting order, but everyone. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. If you choose not to be recording, you have the option of. Would you? First item on the agenda this morning. Travis. For a city manager with the sports complex funding.
May I approach?
Yes.
They've been in the future.
All right. Well. Might be easier if I stand not very careful and bigger. Please do the hall. And a real big copyright here.
If you stand, you can face us and the galleries and everybody can argue.
Do this.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone has the larger copies. You all received a copy of the letter signed by Murawski as well as myself. The Decorous City Council has been working on this project for quite some time. We have almost three point one million dollars locally invested in this project so far of city funds. I say that because a portion of those are committed to the construction site. With three point one, we're still in charge. Have a private fundraising raising effort on the way, which many in attendance are actually a part of. That has secured so far, so far, one hundred and sixty two thousand. Our ask of the city is for the county to consider contributing to this project in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. This is twofold really. So part of that request is there's no doubt that this project is going to benefit the entire. Community, the entire county, not just the city of Port. As you know from my letter, we have a number of other town rural residents that participate in our rec programming to the tune of thirty eight percent. Unique summer users. Were rural Winnebago County residents. So that's one of the reasons we would like to kind of consider this one time contribution. While the city continues the ongoing maintenance bus. The second part of that is one of our. Priorities, we'll say, as far as grant opportunities goes, is the community attraction tourism. With. Not the call. That cat grant application requires a community, broad community support. Using quotes with this, including city contribution, county contribution and private funding. So that's the second part of this request or reason for this request is with the county's participation. It'll help us in our application to another. And state funding towards this. But I do have here. Uh, this is the overall site plan, but if you will flip your pages over and go this one. This one will appear here. The showcase of this one. The project as it's bid right now, this is out to bid. Includes two, two hundred and eighty foot ball fields and eight pickleball courts. Those are the two prime. Attributes of this development. As you can see, it does include parking sidewalks and another consideration that the city made to be conscientious of our three four neighbors. You can see in the bottom left hand corner, there's a lot of parade and stormwater detention built into this project. For the tune of. Three about four hundred thousand in estimated construction costs. So a lot of considerations as part of this project and. We're hoping that we can get a, a three point two. Hopefully less than that bid to have this project finally awarded. With your help, we can do that. Questions we have for me.
This doesn't come with any restrooms. Let's see. Porta bodies or.
Correct. We did have the. Uh, nursing management on site or asked us to consider as part of phase two development. A restroom concession stand facility that could double as storm developer and that estimated construction cost to say a thousand. We thought the ball diamonds first and foremost, pickleball courts for the community to enjoy. Nobody likes to use porta bodies, but they are a whole lot cheaper than they.
I guess I had several, several calls on this here. And biggest question was. Why can we put a ball diamond and stuff here when Walmart could come to town?
Or Menards.
Or Menards, I think. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
That, that was the big question. Why are, why could Menards come, but we can build a ball diamond here? That was the number one. We'd have them, we'd have tax revenue. Yeah, that was every call, every call I've had or person stopped to talk is that's the number one. Want to know why? I said, I have no idea. I said, I'll bring it up at the meeting.
Yeah. I can't give you an answer to that either.
Yep. And. But that's, that's my. My take is if we'd have them, we'd have. Lot of revenue. But helped on the project.
Travis, my question is, this is three point two for the first two ball fields. What is your estimate for the balance of two more fields plus the additional parking area?
So the full build out was eight point. Ninety.
Two hundred. Eighteen.
Was it just under eight million for full build out? That did include that substantially expensive concession stand as well. So I told you that, and you can see the base bid there. We do two ball fields, eight football courts. We did bake into this an alternate, several. Which if funding comes in to the levels that we can. The city can award build out of ball diamonds, three and potentially four as well. If funding was there at the time that we were this. So there are alternates. The contract can fit on that if we have enough funding, we can go ahead and work three and four.
How much of this will actually fall within the floodplain boundaries of the build out portion of extended stands?
So the entire property up to Old Stage Road is floodplain, but none of it is floodway. And so I mentioned before, the furry, furry area as well as the stormwater detention area. The current. Well, not the current, so I take the current uh, condition of consideration, but road graph has had been used prior. As one of the highest runoff coefficients where our develop our proposed development here with that stormwater detention. And furry area is to minimize that storm.
How much of this is. You mean part of the whole flooding issue is permeable and non-permeable. So all the grass areas are permeable where how about the parking lots gravel? So it's permeable.
It is crushed rock with an alternative asphalt.
It's. And that's. I don't know what they make pickleball courts out of. But is there permeable or non-permeable surfaces or anything?
No. I hear you're good. Asphalt or asphalt or concrete. They, they blowing up Achilles tendons. They don't need grits separating. Yeah. There you go.
When the city made the. Deal, the trade with the, the school district.
Hmm.
I understood that the cost of development was built into the sale price.
A portion of. Portion of, so this school purchase price was one point nine seven five. We purchased this property for one point two seven. So that leaves seven hundred thousand dollars to design, construction, the rest, what those are. Now. If you look at purely from a sales standpoint, sale price standpoint, what the city sold the land to the school district. We sold. And if you exclude, if we included ball diamond two, excuse me, one, city ball diamond one, which is often called the high school softball field. In that, as well as left field and third base, the high school baseball field. We included that land in the sale to clean up ownership there. Outside of that, we sold this land at two million dollars, which was shy of four acres. So that's five hundred thousand dollars an acre that we sold the land. There was a lot of discussion about what that sale price should be, but at a certain point it starts to get. If you have been too aggressive. We looked at it as a broad community aspect where yes, we certainly needed funding to help us with this project. But the school also needed to keep funding to build their school, right? Did you feel like the city underestimated the cost? Oh, slightly, but the project has expanded a bit. Uh, originally, there was not a plan for this many pickleball courts. Uh, the baseball fields themselves were. Estimated with slightly smaller dimensions. These are two hundred and eighty feet. Our, our current ball diamond that we utilize for our rec programming is about two fifty at its deepest point. And so this has a bigger field and honestly, the fencing is one of the largest costs associated with this project. Never would have expected.
So what you had. You received one point nine million for, correct?
One point nine seven five, yeah. Just shy of.
Just two million.
Mm hmm.
And now you're at a total cost of six million to replace them.
Not to replace, that's full build outs. Like it's doubling the amount of baseball fields that we have. Uh, currently we own zero dedicated pickleball courts. That's eight. That includes a concession stand with restrooms that is a doubles as storm shelter on site. Uh, parking for. Two hundred vehicles, I think, total with phase two as well. All of those baseball diamonds are two hundred and eighty feet, which, as I said, the one here is two fifty to its deepest point. But I guess if you take the elevation into consideration, it's longer than two hundred and fifty feet.
Was there ever any thought of partnering with Luther College?
Hmm, yeah. So we did have actually conversation, numerous conversations. Or especially pickleball courts, interest there. While. Don't want to say that's not in play at this point. Given that this is going to have an area that is mostly removed from residential properties. There are communities actually that are being sued for replacement of their pickleball courts and partner in residential neighborhoods because of the noise that they can create. So we believe this to be an optimal location tucked back away from residential neighborhoods that that sound isn't going to be an issue.
Traffic is going to be the biggest because it's the busiest road in the county that stretch a road. It's. Is it eleven? It's astronomical. I mean, now you're going to add. If you want to add that, yeah. This. I wing or say it, it's just going to be.
This. Does this include lighting? Then there's no lighting.
There does not include lighting and in this first phase that is included in the. It does include all the conduit and everything run under so that it's set up for lighting in the future.
Then we have, we know the questions for Travis.
How would you answer? This question from seven other incorporated cities in the county.
Hmm.
Uh. Board supervisors, you have allocated this amount of, a certain amount of funds to the city of Decorah for. These for their athletic complex.
Hmm.
Uh, we have athletic complexes we want to expand or that we want to develop further. Uh, so therefore, how come you're not giving? Adequate funds to us to do the exact same thing? How would you respond to that, Travis?
I knew that question was coming and the best answer I can give you is I'll point out local option sales. You know. You'd be hard pressed to argue that Decorah is not the lead generator in this county of local option sales tax, which is distributed out on a per capita basis to all the other. Incorporated as well as the unincorporated areas in Winnebago County. However, the largest portion of that is generated here in the form. Hotel motel accommodations to also, as well as Airbnb, has to be a consideration as well. For a ball diamond complex like this with, if we are able to build out four. Now I can speak from personal experience and maybe others have experienced the same thing. Uh, my oldest decided to go out for club baseball, never played organized baseball until last year. We're going to play club because his friends do. That's an extremely expensive venture because you are spending. All your weekends through July, or excuse me, through June and usually into July. Traveling, staying nice, weekends, have ball diamonds to play on Saturday, and then again on Sunday. You're buying stuff at Walmart because inevitably there's going to rain and you don't have the bros with you or stuff. So the economic development aspect, not just the recreational aspect of this project is why I would ask the county's consideration to contribute to this. Which would benefit all the other communities as well. And I will point out a number of those communities would also be participating at these ball fields as well as the rural residents that are already enjoying our rec programming. Not to mention the, well, I will mention again, the. Posses associated with the stormwater runoff improvements we, we chose to make to consider free port as part of this.
That I asked that question because I, the district I represent has five incorporated cities, of which the population of that is probably. I don't quarter to a third the size of those incorporated cities of the city of Decorah. And I'm certain because I attend all of their city council meetings that that question would certainly arise.
Yep.
And I, I don't know that they would necessarily agree that the economic development comes to them because most of them. Have lost all of those services and it can become commuter hubs to the business, businesses that exist within. Uh, the city limits of Decorah. And I don't think that they would see the same. Uh, tourism development because they don't have any more of those services anymore that can benefit from. Uh, customers coming into there. We have very few, very few grocery stores. We have very few restaurants. Uh, we keep, we have a limited number of even gas stations out in the rural area. But my concern is certainly. Their position. And I don't, I don't know that that's.
And it's.
Most of them have, they have ball, they have ball fields, they use them, they're lighted, they have. Part of, some of them have pickleball courts that have added pickleball courts. So it's their use of facility is going to be. Possibility, that's all I can.
Where are the rural pickleball parks?
Rural, no, it's incorporated city, clearly. Well, there is, there is, they just put a second set of courts into Calmer. There is plans for pickleball courts in Spillville. Uh, there's been some talk in two of the other communities, but at this point, again, they're looking for the same thing. They're looking for the money to be able to go augment what they're trying to do with their own tax dollars as we're all pressed on, on property tax issues.
Yes. To the launch.
I think that's two couple of nights. School.
I should maybe clarify, so when I talk about the economic development component of this. Local option sales tax, while they might not have places in your communities, the other incorporate areas for. These tourists you spend money at. It doesn't matter where they spend it as long as it's collected in Winnebago County. It is distributed back on a per capita basis. So even if, if all the influx is in Decorah. That gets sent back out to the rest of the, rest of the county as well.
That's good.
I hope Decorah makes it helping.
Absolutely.
Hey. Well, thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, Stephanie Brown from Winnebago County Development Tourism with update on building sales.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you.
How are you?
All right. Well, I'm here. Uh, Steve and I had a chance to catch up last week after your last board meeting. Um, and just thought it'd be a good, good idea for me to make a little visit. Uh, but I put in writing here all the things that, uh, we've worked together with, um, Mark and Steve and the rest of the board on pushing out that building, moving it. Um, at this point where we're sitting now is that we've gotten two. Um, Realtor offices committed to an open listing agreement. Uh, which is what was approved by the board at the last, last Monday's meeting. Um, I've talked to a couple of other offices that also plan on signing it or agreeing to it. It's just busy last week with Nordefess and everything else. So at this point, I think, uh, we're sitting pretty good in terms of getting some soft leads and into that facility to tour it. Um, we met at the engineer's office last week too and discussed with some of their staff, some of their ideas. I know at this last, your last meeting, I was able to watch it, um, the recording of it. It was brought up, uh, multiple times to get the building listed on like Zillow and Realtor dot. It was brought up uh multiple times to get the building listed on like Zillow and Realtor dot com, those are actual real estate. Residential real estate websites, this is a commercial listing, so you can't actually put a commercial listing on residential real estate website. So what we have done is put it on to what's called a location one information system, since. Uh it's a website that economic developers use, it's actually subsidized by uh Alliance Energy, so Alliance actually then promotes that. Facility as well, um even though it's on my, my energy artsies territory. Uh but then they also promote it out through their channels as well, as long as it's on that website, so to date, we've had. I would say maybe just over fifteen leads that have reached out asking uh for more information, we have one showing scheduled. Uh for this week, um that will be going out to that site and walking around. Um that lead will likely need it to be rezoned, it's currently zoned as commercial. They're looking at a different use for that, that won't, so. We have, we had just over fifteen leads, and that was mostly, we actually posted on Facebook Marketplace, most of them came from Facebook. Uh the, the person that we're meeting with later this week, um saw it on Facebook.
There is one commercial real estate. It's online nationwide, I can't think of the name of it right now.
There's Crexty and LoopNet um are also. Yeah, you typically have to pay for listings on that.
There is, uh we have, there's one listing in Decora, which is the Kawasaki dealership. Over there on nine, and one, one over in, I think New Hapton, or per commercial land over there. You think there's a benefit of, of paying for the listing price on that and seeing if we have any benefit from that additionally?
We could look at, we could look into it, I know, the, when I had looked at um pushing it out on the lowest website, um. We had looked at LoopNet and Crexty both, I think Crexty you can post for free. And so we were looking at doing something like that, you still need a Realtor's name attached to the listing. Like I couldn't put myself on there, cause I'm not an actual, I'm not licensed Realtor, so. Um yeah, so now that we have real estate agencies signed on to that agreement, everything's formalized, they know what they'll make, if they can sell it. Now we can actually post on, we can look at.
Is the board in a consensus, it would be to add a little bit and pay for a listing on that, on a commercial site as a possibility? What's the general consensus?
Think you figure that out, talk about it next week.
We talked about doing a marketing budget, because we had also, I mean, the three of us had talked about doing like billboard, finding billboards. It's a thousand, I mean, it's like a roughly a thousand bucks a month for a billboard, and then if you don't go the digital route, it's probably a little more to actually like.
Been out there for ninety days now.
We haven't, it hasn't really been out there very well, I've.
Fifteen, more than fifteen leads, and you already did get one offer, you know, I, I don't know how the rest of the week, this week will go, but. You know, we just got the agreement approved at the last meeting too, so. What was that work?
I said, I don't why we.
Well, we had talked about doing the open listing, and then we decided, I mean, you guys didn't.
They kinda waited to see what that one bid was.
So Andy provided the, went through and provided the agreement for us, so we have all the correct language according to the county needs. Appears to be.
An idea with that.
And consider it next week. Our next available.
Let me see how the showing goes.
And there may be real estate offices that have the membership. Or LoopNet or Crexty, that would actually cut the cost, so if their office actually posted it underneath themselves, that. That wouldn't cost us anything, that, cause they would be taking that. So as, at this point, any listing that we were promoting, we had, we didn't have a. It took so long, cause we didn't really have an asking price set, there was no real price set, we had an appraisal, and then we have an assessed value, there was no like. How much do we want for this building?
Never talked about that, you.
No, so we, we did end up discussing on Monday in our small group session and set the price, I think it was sixty.
The assessor's estimate as a starting point.
Yes, that's the listing price, so of course, when you buy a house, you can always offer lower than the listed price. And so that's sort of where we're at. Some other ideas that we had talked about too, you know, emergency management had been looking for an alternative location for a long time. And depending on how this plays out over the next few weeks, you know, if nothing happens. We had talked about potentially splitting the parcel in half, being able to sell off the back and keeping the building for.
You got, if that drain field runs on that property.
You could keep it.
You can't, you can't park on there, you can't drive or park on it.
You can, but you can, that could be worked around, I mean, that happens on many pieces of property. I, I discussed that very thing with Andy. And he felt the same way, all of that is. Workable within real estate transactions.
Yeah, that is workable.
The back part, please.
If we allow, and just a conversation that I had with, with county surveyor, if the, if the property. Of, of the associated with the building allowed for. Uh eighty feet behind the building in the gravel parking area to provide for two lane and travel. For parking back there, and then the balance split off, it'd be about. Two, uh two point seven acres plus or minus, uh in that. Two and a half plus acres, that could be uh utilized for another, for another usage or whatever.
Thank you for your.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Next item on the agenda, Dr. Bullshoe.
Thanks, you guys.
Hopefully, this is the, the last one.
It's a good thing you said you had four good ideas.
Yeah, yeah, so I reached out to my second choice, um and he did accept, but I said I had to come here to get a blessing. Yes, yeah, um the first one, basically, he just said, uh wage was. His biggest factor. Um and I just said, you gotta do what you gotta do, I mean, that's, he appreciated the offer, but he just. He works quite a bit overtime now, and he just didn't think he could swing it, so. Yeah, so I mean, I would have taken.
What's the name of the person we're offering?
The one, it would be Alan McCune, probably butchered his last name, but.
And make a motion to approve the hire of Alan McCune as new employee at recycling.
I'll second that.
A motion to second, approve the hire of Alan McCune as a new employee at recycling, is there any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side?
When do you anticipate he will start, Jeff?
A week from today. Gets all of his testing done, uh shouldn't be a problem, the way it sounded, so he's scheduled tomorrow, first of testing, and. That all goes through um August fourth, he'll start, so.
A nice relief.
Big time.
That will allow, that will allow some other things that you've been unable to do.
I know, help you immensely, so, um looking forward to getting somebody in there, so getting trained and everything, and so it should be. He should be very good, so.
Okay, thank you.
Back on the schedule.
Seven o'clock, Mike McCune, your dog, he's here.
Did we see wind damage last night from that, a little bit of a storm I went through?
I haven't heard of anything in particular, um I do know that outside the county that there was some wind damage.
Right, since last meeting, uh when county finally approved the grant. Uh this is nothing new this week, in that. As far as that's concerned, uh nothing new on the rail, railcar, uh. River flat car bridge study, uh nothing new on the subdivision. Um information that I'm trying to get out to you all for a year plus now. The project for the Quarry Hill, uh nothing new again this week. Um Nestie Valley Construction uh is ongoing, the rocking of the Nestie Valley Road. Occurred last week. Um and then this week, we were, we will be looking at the campground, uh and the individual campsites. Uh getting those squared away and, and rock.
Was it true the campsites are, the rock part is thirty feet wide for a campsite?
That is what was in the grants.
You're at county conservation, sir.
That was, we were discussed on the conservation board. Whether it's part of the grant.
I mean, that, that's, by the way, it's changing, um yeah, I mean, that, I would have to work with conservation on, on. Altering that, if that's the decision, decision board wants to go. Um and that, that would be, and have to happen quickly here at this point. Um W twenty culvert installation, uh all six culverts are installed. Boat was closed this past weekend, because the backflow operation had not completely finished. Uh the soil was wet, uh we wanna hit it again with some more compaction, so. That's why it's remained enclosed, but they were, they will be cleaned up today. The DOT Bridge Engineers visited two weeks ago, uh the county has compliance, and. Further updates and Sims are, are occurring. FEMA, uh pretty much the same as last week, we did get um the next step. And can't articulate exactly what that step is, but we got notified that. So it is category A is being worked on, and we should be receiving a check soon. The DuraPatcher is finished with W twenty, and it's now done to block the road. Um hatching the River City uh sites doing the, the B thirty-two project will also. With W twenty. Where we install those culverts, um Bridge three oh seven is shaping up, we let in December of twenty twenty-six. There are a couple of new reasons for that as of this week. So they kinda have to do the five-year plan, so that's gonna, that'll help the five-year plan go, uh go through. Uh Bridge two oh eight E, uh construction, uh I think they're, they're, they're past their late start date, and it has not started yet. Um this is due to credit as a contractor, uh just being backed up by. Yeah, the number of storms that we had, so I, I definitely feel for their. Uh they, they don't have any good decisions to make, so.
Will it be able to finish up in time this year?
I would imagine with all the things that were, that have been going on, uh that yes, uh they were, they're. Wind stream or uh has been down there to alter, to lower the, the data line that's down there. Um so that should make the process of, on the downstream side, uh go a lot better. So things are still being done on that, uh even if it's outside of the contractor, so. Bridge one twenty-six. Uh NEPA clearances have been completed, and, and that project will also let NEPA be let in December. Um and you're working on uh acquiring the right of way needed. Um we have to wait until NEPA is cleared before right of way gets, the business of right of way occurs. Frankville Road, uh same as last week, and uh just including the note that. The reduction in cost was, we pulled the, the paved shoulder off of that, that portion of the project to save, save funding. Um sign grants has, has moved along, um eighty-six sites will be put up in coordination with the NRCS. Uh DOT is doing its traffic council for the county, uh. It's my understanding that across the field process is now wrapping up, and then the data will be uh coming shortly. And the la, the last two new trucks from Don's should arrive, Winneshe County uh next week. And I am, I'll be within a day of submitting the annual report, so.
There's a plan, the Quarry Hill, about to move the city, all those plans in your office.
There, the plans are, are based up, there's no. Uh construction plans, um they're, it's gonna be based off of what's easy to. Straighten in terms of how Bruins can construct it, and you're adjusting the right of way and that land swap will be. So up two, two a, uh two acres will be transferred to the city, and then. The county is gonna. Purchase back between the city and the Bruins, roughly an acre. Um and then.
So we're giving two acres away and buying an acre?
Uh the, the giving away of acres is the Bruins portion, but it's kind of a stepped process, so. Their Bruins actually owns land of budding, which is across the right of way. Uh right next to Van Panen.
But bruining is on both sides of the roadway.
In some areas, yes.
And so we're gonna buy what we need for the actual road, and then anything left on that other side of the road, they're giving to the city. But since we're moving our, into their area more, we need to buy right of way to get. Or I guess.
So and point tens, there was already a, uh if you look at the right of way map on Beacon, you'll notice there's an S curve. Uh in the right of way, and the road has already been somewhat straightened, that is, that's where uh. City residents or whoever uses the park, parks. Uh and that's Bruins land effectively, so they, they've allowed that. To happen through the last decade plus. And, and so now all of this kinda cleans. The ownership of all this up.
And part of the discussion was being able to maintain a blind between the road and.
Yeah, this is a high, this is a. That's the.
What kind of purchase prices?
The, all these purchase prices that are being swapped are at assessed value, uh and that's roughly ten thousand. An acre. So.
Does this expansion open up any more land from?
Uh doesn't open up more land, it, the Bruins does get the benefit of this. Being able to sell the rock they do to, to clear this, but that's not, it's not new land, they are.
They're taming away from.
I don't wanna say taking away from Bruins, but, but.
They're gonna get rocks for cleaning.
Yeah.
Cutting the bluff out, they'll have, they're.
Correct.
We get the byproduct of making the roll.
So. That's the, that's the general agreement, um this is. The city is on board, I had not talked with uh the rep there uh in about a week and a half, so. The city is on board, I had not talked with, uh, the rep there, uh, in about a week and a half, so.
That whole. Access is messy, it's weird.
Well, well, I mean, it's just not the. Effectively, nothing's changing, uh, in terms of use, but yes, the way it's being used is not how it's. Uh, delineated in, in property, in terms of property, so it is kind of messy that way because people are. On Bruins land, but acting as the park, so.
But this seems to be stalled, is there any particular thing that you can point to for why it's, we're not progressing and getting it done?
Um, well, the city would like to see, make sure that there's, um. Would like to see that the, the screening that is maintained by Bruins, they would like to see a plan for that, and I just had not coordinated. Uh, Bruins in the city and to my knowledge, they are not coordinating amongst themselves. So that is some, some legwork on my end that, that I didn't do last week, so.
So when you say screening, what, what do you mean by that, Michael?
So, um, typically with, well, I mean, if you go up on top of the hill, you can see the, all the rock operations there on Quarry Hill. So what is a concern is that when you're in the park, you don't wanna be seeing those same operations. So there's some kind of visual screen, burn, whatever, whatever it is, what's the plan? For, uh, hiding those operations from, from park doors. And, and I just had that, uh, have not touched base with the city and all of that. So.
It's a workable situation.
It's a very workable situation, nothing's set in stone, I haven't heard that, um, Mr. Bruins has not. Pushed me on this at all, uh, the city is, uh, in no hurries either, I think. If any entity that wants to get this done, be the Secretary of Roads Department.
Is the estimate for timing?
It really was in a week, I think, so.
The project would only take a week?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that based off of. Yeah.
Well, there's a lot.
The, I, I, when I say the, the project, I'm saying the road closure, so.
Probably no blasting.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I, I'm speaking on things that I don't know for sure, but that's my understanding.
Who's the rep in the city working on this?
Uh, his name is Mark Holte.
We want to have a new address.
Thank you.
Now that the verdict test is over, you're volunteering against these.
Oh, yeah, I took some time off on Friday, so.
It's good.
Next on the agenda, few miscellaneous items, first of which is Happy Nelson, uh, management partners.
Yeah, this is the, uh, letter that outlines their intent to do our third, third party audit against the peers. How's what they're planning to do, what they'll provide as part of that process.
I've moved to approve the Hacker Nelson Agreement letter.
Second.
And the motion is second to approve the Hack Nelson Amendment order. For further discussion, if none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was both, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Next though, ISAC voting resolution.
Um, you probably saw the email, but the ISAC, the change of bylaw and to comply with different. Rules about lobbying or something, I don't really know, they have to name our voting members to the different ISAC boards. So it's basically a list of, you know, County Treasurer, Tim Smack, County Auditor, and Snyder's. County Supervisors, the five of you, so I'm.
Just listing all of them.
Just listing them all, say these are our official, our official people, so. Shouldn't be any surprises on the list, is what I'm trying to say, they're all.
The ISAC resolution for voting members.
So good.
Motion is second to approve the ISAC voting resolution is, is a resolution. Hi, Sherwin.
Hi.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
I also press as unanimously. Next up, discuss acting out these facilities for the period. Well, I think it's just Albany to keep on there, and these, like things are going.
I did talk to Andy about that, he said he feels better once we have some offers, but prematurely setting.
Yeah, we can keep it in the miscellaneous side of each way, so.
Midriff and all that's getting on, he said it would be much cleaner if we waited. We do have one.
Well, yeah.
Additional offers.
Right, um, consent agenda?
Yeah, we've got minutes, claims, and, uh, VA monthly reform.
I'd hope to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Second to approve the consent agenda, all is in favors, say aye.
Aye.
It was both same sign. Committee reports?
And Policy Board, third Wednesday there, and we're gonna put, uh, crap, well. Traffic approaching signs on Madison Road fifty-two, that's the number one in our DOT region of counties here. That's the number one at fifteen in the last five years, I think, so it's gonna be traffic approaching. So we'll try to ease that, another one is they're gonna do a study on eighteen and fifty-twos. Outside of the intersection, the number one, the, for that fifty-two, and that's number two, and then number three, it was seventy-six. Going along the bluff down, below fifty miles, that one, they said it's just, they don't want to do there.
That was some errors.
I mean, and it's just how you, you got a bluff there, but they're in the top three in our. DOT region, that's, this one here is, they're gonna do this one first and do a study at.
Which intersection was it?
Madison Road and fifty-two, that's still in the city limits, the going out on Madison.
That's, you can't say that. Bridge on the highway, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know where the, but the sign. Yeah, well, it'll be, I suppose it'll be for the people on the Madison Road, it'd be trap, you know, be the traffic coming.
Yeah.
Indicate if somebody's coming from either, there's always that blind spot in your car, you don't connect cars, you're, you're playing that. That's the worst one, I, you know, that's the worst problem to have.
The, um, Children's Christmas Center downtown, uh, Northeast Iowa Behavioral Health New Clinic has their open house this. Wednesday from five thirty to seven, I encourage everybody to take a look and go through that tour, please. Look at Northeast Iowa Community Action Day tonight, and let's do it.
So, uh, the DOT, the, why it's ignored, that's gonna be a devastation for two years, so.
Yeah, that's not officially closed yet.
It will be in October, sometime in October, up with, give or take. That's gonna be, that's, that's, they were talking about bringing a, a car transport up the Mississippi, but. There's a couple of low spots to get it up here, and they thought they may have to take it all the way around and come in through.
Well, the great way.
Yeah, yeah, cause there's a couple of low spots, they didn't think they could get it up through.
Take a couple of low spots and lift it up.
Yeah, so I don't know if they'll get. Get through the car.
Even that, a brush out, whatever.
Yeah, again, the. Yes, yeah, it's gonna be dead, Steve.
Yeah, that's over a year and a half, basically.
Be two.
Yeah.
The fall of twenty-seven.
Yeah, so it would be two.
Two years, I mean, that's, that's huge.
Uh, Workforce Development Board on Thursday, again, more of the same, trying to understand where things are going with the feds in the state.
Have pocket today, this afternoon, uh, I think they passed that. Our current director, that will continue to work remotely, at least through this year, and then it looks like they're not gonna replace that position. In the next budget, so, um, that'll be tough, um, on those services. And then, um, CSS, as we continue to function with, uh, to pay bills and claims. Uh, on Wednesday.
The courthouse, courtroom is continuing, uh. Paint colors are selected, the judge has our ideas, and that's all through, and will be can, starting relatively soon. But it will come in conjunction with the replacement of the carpet and the second half of the ceiling lights, so that it all happens at one time. Because the jury box has to be disassembled, the, the separation wall moved, and, and then the, then the, uh. And she's reattached to the floor, so it's gonna be. Me, kind of working around the trial schedule, et cetera, and there has been a little bit of a hang up over carpet because of shortage of vinyl. But fortunately, appears that Fashion Floor was able to tie our order in for the courtroom with the Aussie Hoggett order, and so. We feel that we've got a better chance of, you know, staying on schedule and getting it, but it's, uh, unexpected.
Is there anything else on that oyster spot?
Uh, we did have a tiny, you know, that's like, in the corner of the courthouse, up above that one pillar that is yet to be repaired, there was a small. Apparently, uh, the roof is coming back up shortly, hopefully to try to trace where that came from. My opinion is, everything that I've seen, and I think Mark would agree from what we experienced up there in the attic, that those. Those eyebrow, with little eyebrow vents are the problem, and so we may, if that appears to be it, we may just try. Uh, using a, uh, seal tape over the top of those two particular attic ventilators. And see if that solves our problem, I'm, I'm a, I'm of a strong opinion that that is the problem, but the architect doesn't agree.
The wind is from the right direction.
It came lower, it came out of the south, strong wind and rain of that one storm, and that's where we get that small leak. So those two are the suspects, and I think that's, that, that at this point.
We can always seal them, the tape.
It's made and pull it off, yeah, and I, it's not gonna affect our ventilation issue up there to any extent.
But I think that one major, that's, take the care of it, let me. All right, it was long, uh, tower.
Yep.
So Steve, I don't, I'm sure you've talked to Judge Parrish about it, that, uh, month of October, there are jury trials scheduled here. That would be the time to pull a court, pull apart a, uh, jury box if you're going to do it.
Oh, we, although they, they figure they can probably accomplish it in a couple of days. So, well, he's, uh, John's working very closely, but only according to Judge Parrish's schedule.
Alright.
But if, if it need be in October, then it'll be October.
That one, that one I can safely say it's, uh, not going to have jury trial. Between now and then, there's some.
But then one other thing that not pertaining to us or anything, but Social Security Office will not be closing anymore. There was a room, but that was, but it will not be, the gentleman that was there retired. Yeah, yeah, they'll get somebody new down, I believe, I guess, it must be.
Wow, yeah, that's. We've done that for a while.
Cause otherwise it'd be one, who, who can, that's, I mean, yeah. He wants to load him and keep it open. I'm not at the meeting, maybe Wednesday or team.
What do you have for us today, Andy?
Nothing really, which is kind of nice relief, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark sent that, that, Mark Paul had sent that, uh, dissolution agreement for CSS. That by some point we have to act on installing that twenty-eight, he, he sent a, he sent a. What one of the other companies used, if you wanna.
I'll take a look.
Take a look at that, and as of at least right now, there's no meeting next week. That would be two weeks from now.
Your work on the state case.
We did send Ben a, uh, copy of the dedication for the Nestie.
Oh, just this morning, probably?
This morning, so that, um, I think Conservation Board meets the twelfth of August, you guys can act on it. Get it back to the system after.
That'll be on the eighteenth, I think I have it.
Anything else?
Okay. Uh, CCS, just gonna distribute all the, the CSS.
CSS. The excess part of it was talked about, going back, everything has to be approved through the new agency now, and so, uh. The, the properties that are in the different offices will revert to the counties. And then the money proceeds gets turned back into the.
Was there vehicles?
They were sold, they were also. Yeah, they own, you know, had quite a bit of properties, but they were all sold and are still outstanding, lending's coming in, so. But no fun, no, no funding in the backfill, so, so.
So there may not be that much money left.
I'll find out more on Wednesday, uh, and what they think balance.
Where you're saying, no, one time.
Yeah. It, it seems as though it's been evaporating.
And if you have, if, yeah, do they have a plan if there's not enough money? I mean, at some point they'll run out of funding, will the new agency be? Are they gonna come to county and ask for everyone to put some in that cover?
That's why we want a twenty-eight year now.
Yeah.
Who knows where it's gonna go at, but the county should. At this point, it's kind of like the proposed one with the judicial meeting, you know, I mean. The new. Organization, I'll call it, it only is gonna cover half, budget for half of what our current things are, so. That'll be interesting, I'd rather figure that's gonna be. Take the turn. Just service, I suppose they figure there's gonna be savings by not having. By cutting. Who knows? No one knows. No, it's still, it still goes back to both, both of these things, about who's transferring inmates and clients and people and who's paying for it.
Ultimately, it'll probably fall back on the county to some extent.
I think probably so. So, you know, and like, but branch of the county is gonna cover some of that, uh, it would, would be public health or. Mental health, it would be covering public health or some. Chair.
Chair, and the, putting the bell.
Anyone have anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll better put something on for the agenda for the next meeting I have about the. Sports complex discussed, if I can, or anything.
I just will have it on there so you can discuss it.
Yeah.
I, I think would be interesting as well. Usage wise of these other communities that have parks, I mean, what are those, where are those users coming from? You know, as they say, thirty-eight percent of this, just in the, just, that's just in the D-Florida rec. Summer programs, it's thirty-eight percent are non-D-Florida residents, well, how many people are using, like, Portac and San Roche? Of those parks are not. City residents or are those county residents, you know? Yeah, it would be interesting to know the breakdown numbers, so you can say proportionally, well, here's how we're spending our money.
No, they don't have a different fee for rural users, so city users are, are covering the fees, you know, for rural users. So that's someplace they could pay some more money, but not to the extent that they need.
Cause when I was on the Ashen, what would he want? I would say half of the kids.
Yeah, you know, and part of it. Decore, I mean, Marley, Westy County does not have any. Incorporated cities, so those people are probably heavily using.
Like the library thing. Half the colony, that that part of the county is only twenty percent.
Now, like Austin doesn't have the health, so probably the South Wind. And all the cities donate money to that South Wind program. We'll keep that. And they utilize the ballparks in Washington.
The county donated at the beginning when they first got it going, that about when we're. First couple of years, we've donated.
Money to its operation.
Yeah, to get it going, and then once they kind of got it established, the county kind of withdrew out of that.
But the county supported it to help get going.
Can't remember, wasn't a lot, it was. Five or ten thousand dollars a year for a couple of years, but.
Yeah. And many of the, like that whole uh Kalmer, Lee, Kalmer. Spillville, so forth, all of those are also, there's also rural residents who are working that are part of those, any any rural families out there besides, so that are being. Accompanied by their.
Alright, I'll actually do it, Jerry.
Second.
And the motion is second for adjournments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everybody.
You got the sign that I mentioned. And then I have, you got the sign.
I think there, I think I saw it, got thrown in there. Yeah, thank you. No meeting next week, unless something of emergency comes up, there's nothing on the agenda. No idea.
It's an odd.
Yeah, I have no idea, he had some paperwork in his hand, so I, I haven't seen. How are you? Yeah, not today.
Today.
No. Yeah. Uh, bottom on, there's only two supervisors left.